Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock. It is Monday the ninth. And welcome to our city council meeting. If you have not placed a parking pass on your dashboard, there are parking passes available on the door downstairs. Please grab one, place it near dash so you don't get a ticket. And City Clerk, shall we have a roll call vote?
Start the roll call with Councilmember Bowles.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer. Present. Mayor Pro Tem Butterlance.
Here.
Mayor Big Stick.
So I will lead the salute to the flag. Wait, no, land acknowledgement first, then salute to the flag. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama Tishra Looney peoples who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rama Tishra Looney peoples for their great commitment to mothers. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama Tishra Looney have never ceded, lost, or forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives Have some proclamations tonight. I will start with the proclamation for Michael Perez. Whereas Michael Perez is retiring from a distinguished public service career with the City of Pacifica, serving for the past 13 years as the Director of Public Works, excuse me, Director of Public Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department, and, this is my first time. Whereas Michael Perez has served over 34 years with the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department, beginning with his part-time roles as Recreation Leader in 1988, Day Camp Director in 1989, Instructional Teacher in 1990, and Sub-Assistant Programmer in 1991, and promoting to his full-time roles as Child Care Activity Programmer in 1991, Site Coordinator in 1993, Recreation Supervisor in 1998, and lastly, Director in 2009. And whereas Michael Perez has spearheaded valuable recreational experiences, such as the Pacifica Skate Park Project, Surf Camp, Fun Fest, Junior Olympics, Holiday Extravaganza, and Spooktacular, and oversaw capital and program improvement plans across the Recreation, Senior Services, and Child Care Divisions of the Department for the Betterment of the Community. And whereas Michael Perez has tackled every community activity with a microphone and clipboard in hand, directing staff and resources from setup to breakdown, and empowered the department with his leadership and decision-making skills. And whereas Michael Perez has promoted making connections, building relationships, and working with people in his city work, music career, and volunteer experience, the last of which has earned him the 2006 Elna Flynn Award, the Hershey's Track Meet Award, on two occasions, and recognition as the Department's Employee of the Year in 2001. Now, therefore, I, Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby pay tribute to Michael Perez and thank him for his continuous commitment to our community, So, I wanted to let you know also, along with the city proclamation, we've, our State Senator Josh Becker's office has also kindly sent recognition. And so you'll have the opportunity to read that at your leisure. I'm going to invite the council members to make comment first.
That would be up to the mayor, I think. If you'd like that first and...
I'm telling you.
Okay, all right. Not a request?
Not a request. Suspense will build.
All right, I'm gonna go first. Can I go first?
You can go first.
Through the mayor.
Go for it.
Okay, because I couldn't figure out where my light was.
I know.
And I'm excited, okay. Mike, Mike, thank you. Like, thank you so much. For one, for all you've done for our city, for every young person who has gone through your programs over the last, how many decades? You have touched so many young people and their families. It's really, it's really amazing what you've been able to do for our city and for our young people. So thank you so much for that. And you might get sick of me saying this too, but thank you so much for what you've done for me. You know, you've been a mentor to me without even understanding that you were being a mentor to me. You taught me how to be a commissioner. You encouraged me to be a council member. You helped me with the Pacifica Prevention Partnership. I can go on and on. Just know that I strive to be like you. I like to have your cynical questions in meetings. And just the way that you're able to sort through information and make sure everybody understands what's going on. I just want to be more like Mike, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sue Beckmeyer.
Mike, I want to thank you for all that you've taught me because every time I would bring a question or suggestion to you, you would say, "Oh yeah, we did that and da-da-da-da." When I did this position, name the position, from playground as a teen, all the way up through every bit of PBNR. And the wealth of knowledge that you have, that you developed, the institutional knowledge that you have, is immense. And so, serving with you, as we do on the Pacifica School Volunteers, even there, I mean, it seems unrelated, and yet, you bring so much to that experience because of what you've done during your working career. And so I'm just grateful for everything you've taught me, everything I've learned from serving with you, and I'm super grateful that you still live here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Like everybody else, I want to say thank you for everything. My kids participated. One of my daughters worked for PBNR at one point in one of the school sites, so I have close ties to PBNR. And I thank you personally for everything that you've done over so many years that you've been here. And just thank you, and also see you around.
Thank you.
And Mike, I'm just sad I'm not gonna get to work with you. Sometimes, you know, I think that you must have the most fun job in the city, getting to work with the kids and our seniors and, you know, making sure everyone's engaged and happy and learning. But I also know that that's a really difficult job, and especially the last few years with COVID, where a lot had to shut down and be reimagined. Thirty-four years, that's a really long time. And you've seen our kids grow up and become adults and, you know, what amazing memories you must have and connection to the city. So just thank you very much for all your years.
Mike, a lifetime of Pacifica. Thank you so much that you chose to make this your home and to make this a home for all of us, so deeply, so thoroughly. Before it occurred to me I might want to be on council someday, I got to walk by your house every day on the way to work. That's a taste of what it means to me, how deeply ingrained in this community you are. And it strikes me that what you've facilitated over a lifetime worth of a career, the beginning, middle, and end of so many lives, you are the continuity of our community. You have brought forth the continuity of community for all of these lives over so long. Your experience will be missed, you will be missed. So thank you so very much. And if you'd like to speak?
I would love to say something, actually. I appreciate that. And I only wrote it down because I don't like to forget things, right? I want to thank you all very much. It's the Council, Past and Present Council, because I've worked for a lot of city council members over the years. Probably didn't know them all when I was much younger, but I do appreciate all your support for our programs at our department, and the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission too, as well. We've had a lot of support, and I've worked with a lot of folks on there, and it's been a pleasure. And, you know, most of, or many of the greatest experiences that I've had in like the three decades as a recreation professional and working here for the city, it's about building relationships. And the process of working with a diverse group of people, whether, you know, community members, my coworkers, volunteers, addressing challenges and solving problems to create opportunities has been some of the most rewarding work of my life and my career. And I've had days that are filled with really meaningful interactions. And they've been with people that I've known, you know, I've just met for the first time. But they've also been with those whom I've carefully cultivated relationships with over the years. And either way, those interactions are really important, and it leads us to all the connections. It's the building blocks of our work and our organization and our careers and our community. And along the way, I've been able, and I've had the privilege of working with some outstanding staff members, and many of them are here tonight and over at that table right there. But 34 years, that's a lot of time, and it's a lot of people that I've worked with. And supervisors, staff members, coworkers, fellow executive team members, they've all helped and contributed to my growth and development as a professional and a leader and a department director. So I've also had this fortunate, I've been very fortunate to work with Parks, Beaches, Recreation staff and volunteers, and they've continued to display their dedication to our programs and compassion to our participants, particularly during the last several years, as was noted, because we've had some very challenging conditions due to COVID. And really, I'm very proud, and it warms my heart as to how they've all performed during that time. And so I want to thank my wife, Chris, she's back there, and my daughter Jamie, and my daughter Marley's not here. And, you know, Chris has been my partner for more than three decades. She also retired along with me, because we do do a lot of things together. And that's lucky for me because I get to spend more time with her. So, and all my family members too, because, you know, when your husband, father, brother, uncle, nephew works for community recreation, that means that you have to volunteer for things, a lot. So if you ever came to any of our runs in the 90s, the 2000s, you probably saw every volunteer on the course was a member of my family. And, you know, from when they were this little to, you know, till I could get them to do it when they were teenagers. So again, I very much appreciate this honor, and thank you all very much. It's been quite a ride, and I'm looking forward to my next chapter.
So before you go, before picture, before I bring these down to you, do any members of the public wish to come up and say a word or two for Mike? Or anyone want to call in? Emily, do I have anyone on the line? And if anyone has the desire to speak, please fill out a speaker card in the back and bring it up. If anyone wants to say something about Mike, feel free to just come up now and fill the speaker card out afterward.
We have one dial-in. It is the number ending in 7310.
And their hand is raised? Okay, so please press star six to unmute. And it takes a moment to unmute, so press star six and give it a moment, and you'll be able to speak. Emily, is their hand still raised?
Hi, Suzanne Moore from the Manor. Just want to thank Mike and his family for all his hard work. We in the public are very appreciative. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, next up, we have a proclamation for Mr. Paul Laverini. And though it would be my honor to make that proclamation, I had a special request.
This is a proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Paul Laverini. Whereas, Paul Laverini is retiring from a long career dedicated to public service with the Pacifica Public Works Department, serving most recently as Field Services Manager in the Field Services Division. And whereas, Paul Laverini has served over 27 years with the Public Works Department, beginning with his appointment as Assistant Tree Trimmer in 1995, where, in addition to tree maintenance, he built playgrounds, installed lawns and irrigation, and maintained streetlights. I'm sure there were other things there too. In 2000, Paul was promoted to Maintenance Worker Two in the Streets section of Field Services, where he learned his skills with asphalt paving, concrete placement, heavy equipment operation, street striping, and sign shop work. And whereas, Paul Laverini continued to develop his skills by moving to wastewater collections as an Operator One in 2001 and an Operator Two in 2008, during which time he obtained his operator grades one, two, three, four, and five, and still holds his grade-five certification today. In wastewater, Paul operated the rod...
Truck.
Thank you. VACcon, I know what that is, and TV trucks, and I don't think it's a TV, but it is, because it goes in the lines. Okay. And bursting machines. And upon moving to Operator Two, managed the fog, fats, oils, grease program, and community outreach programs, as well as worked as the city's Source Control Officer and Wastewater Construction Inspector. And whereas, in 2017, Paul Laverini moved back to Field Services when he was promoted to Streets Superintendent due to his strong work ethic and extensive knowledge in tree work, streets, and storm response. Paul was then promoted to Field Services Manager in January of 2021, after being the top-ranked candidate through an open recruitment process. And whereas, Paul Laverini has played a critical role in managing Public Works's response to Pacifica's large storm events during his time with the city, including the large El Nino year storms, where he helped evacuate homes before the Esplanade Bluff failure, and the Hundred Year Storm Event in October of 2021, where he managed the Anza Stormwater Pump Station, helping to prevent significant flooding of the Lower Lindemar area. And whereas, Paul Laverini has worked on numerous projects for the city, including the San Pedro Creek Rehabilitation Project, the Esplanade Bluff Erosion Project, and the Frontierland Park and Play Structure, and was recognized as Outstanding Employee of the Year in 2000, and has been dedicated to community events such as Running Logistics for Relay for Life for the past 21 years. And whereas, Paul Laverini has always shown dedication and willingness to help the public, and has displayed a tireless can-do attitude in his public service and leadership. Now, therefore, I...
Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick.
On behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby extend our grateful thanks and appreciation to Paul Laverini for 27 years of dedicated service to the City of Pacifica, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors, done this ninth day of January 2023.
So I'm figuring out how I want to do these proclamations in real time. I'd like to take public comment before council has the opportunity to speak. So if any members of the public have something they would like to say about Paul, please come on up. Or if there is anyone on the phone.
There's one person on the phone, but no hands raised.
Pause for just a moment, if anyone would like to come up and speak. Okay. Council, anyone want to say something about Paul?
I will. Paul's everywhere. He's a, you drive down Highway One, and there's a person in an Uncle Sam suit waving a sign every single day when they had fireworks, every day. Go to an event, he's there. Relay for Life, he's there. Some tree down on Carmel, he's there. You're everywhere, and I hope to see you everywhere in the future. So I appreciate you so much, more than I could say on this up here.
I didn't press my button. Oh, Mary did.
You pressed a button?
She did.
It did not? Oh, it did. Okay, go for it.
Paul, thank you so much. I feel like I'm just getting to know you, although I've seen you for so many years, right? And so I think you're one of the people that I've taken for granted, that I just figure is always gonna be there, always taking care of everything that we need in our city. And the one thing that I really noticed is how your coworkers and your staff talk about you, and how much they respect you, and how much they like working with you. And so that says a whole lot about who you are and how you worked for our city. I really appreciate you so very much. I'm glad that we are just starting to get to knowing one another a little better, and I hope to continue that. And I'll see you at the Moose Lodge. So thank you so much, Paul.
Christine.
I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you yet, but it's such a treat to learn all about you. You're obviously an invaluable member of our city team, and I'm not sure how we're gonna do without you when I hear all that you have done. And I'm particularly impressed by how you've moved around, always learning and always growing in whatever place you were. But that's really the sign of dedication and just a good spirit and leadership, and really wish you well in your retirement. Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Paul. Well, I think I can speak very confidently about my length of time of knowing you. And as much as I know not only what you've done, I know who you are. And I am so proud to hold you and your entire family as dear friends, friends like family friends. Besides the impressive work history that you have and the amount that you have learned and grown and developed over that time, the thing that impresses me probably the most is what you have taught others, not only by the specific skills or the specific how to use this machine, but by your example, by your enthusiasm, your showing them how to work, showing them how to get it done, showing them how to have fun. Because it's work hard, play hard. And you've always inspired me with your willingness, I think this phrase is overused, but in your case, it's so apt, to lean in when the challenge is there. And so we've talked, I mean, in the last week, just happened to run into each other. And you talked to me about how storms teach us. Storms are the best thing, because that's how we bring our best game, and that's how we learn, and that's how we develop, and that's how we know exactly what we need to know. So building that knowledge, time over time, is just the epitome of, you know, being a learning organization and developing professionally. You know, we talk about professional development all the time. But Paul, you live it. And I'm just so grateful to know you and to know that we'll be seeing each other at the Moose, and to know that we'll be seeing each other at Relay. And I love you, and thank you for all that you've given to our city.
And thank you for all that you've given to our city, to the people of the city, and to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, Paul. In general, I feel like Public Works too often are unsung heroes in our community. When someone sees the police vehicle or the fire truck go down the street, they have some idea. But when a Public Works vehicle goes down the street, if they notice it to begin with, I don't know how often the community is acutely aware that they're holding the physical fiber of our community together. So thank you, because I have an acute understanding of that, which is why I try to remind people that Public Works is here holding it together for us every chance I get. To a comment that Councilmember Bowles made, I imagine that if we are able to survive without you, it's because of how much time you have spent teaching those who will come after you. And thank you for that. Thank you for passing on to the future of Public Works what we will need as a city. So all that having been said, I know you best from walking around a circle a bunch. You know, the impressions I have at you were made at Relay for Life more than anywhere else. And yeah, I've seen you everywhere in this room and out there doing the work. But it's been walking around that circle and standing in front of that stage and hearing you as you cultivated your voice in terms of building community and helping those whom have come from some of the deepest places of healing to form that community and form a heart within our community. And not just that, watching you as you would then work for that event to make sure everything's clean, to make sure those gophers aren't creating holes for people to stumble in, making sure that the logistics are taken care of for years and years. And so thank you for your work for the city, but it translates so much deeper into work building this as a community. And I'm so deeply grateful that I get to know you and call you friend, call you brother, and congratulations on this well-earned retirement.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may. Mayor. Mayor Big Stick, sorry. We had one phone number join after close of public comments. How would you like to proceed? They raised their hand twice.
We will reopen public comment and allow this person to speak. Please press star six to unmute. Usually it takes a moment for you to know you're unmuted, and then please state your name for the record and say what you have to say.
Sometimes at Public Works, no call is a good call. That means everything's running smooth.
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me. It's technology that has crossed me up again. I'm very sorry I'm not there. My perspective as 16 years working with both Mike and Paul has been a real honor to you gentlemen. You really epitomize the great Pacifica spirit. You have the heart and the drive. Really appreciate all you've done for the city. It's been remarkable, and I'm glad to hear you're both still there around. And thank you again. This is Sue DeGree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Emily, anybody else on the phone?
There are no other lines on the phone. Thank you.
While we have it open, anyone from the audience wish to say anything? I am closing public comment once again. Mr. Laverini, do you have anything you wish to say?
Well, first of all, thank you very much. I've been pretty lucky to have a career in the City of Pacifica. I've made a lot of friends along the way. Retiring healthy and happy. That was my goal. I can honestly say that this whole council, Mike included, I would invite to my house for barbecue and a beer. Everybody in the city manager's office all throughout the city, all my colleagues, I can call my friends. So I've had a really good, fun career. I love working hard. And yes, Sue, I do love storms. I retired on the 30th, and of course, the 31st was the storms. So that was planned perfectly. It was just, uh, my wife and I actually went out on the 31st and we drove around and I was pointing out hot spots and fun stuff. And they checked in on me, and it was really good. But I can honestly say that I'm very honored to be here tonight, to stand in front of you, to be acknowledged. Mike, a great job. And we've been together forever, but we've kind of been in different areas. But we've always had the great support, and the last couple of years have been even more fulfilling. So thank you for that. The whole thing about working for the City of Pacifica is about community to me. Honestly, you put, you get what you put in. And if I can work with one person, one homeowner at a time, one resident at a time, and they can go to Mazzetti's and talk about it and tell 10 other people, Public Works, Public Works, Public Works, we breathe it. My whole career has been with Public Works, and I really work with the community to get them to, I let them understand what we're about. We're not just out there, you know, doing small jobs. We're behind the scenes. We're in the community. You know, our kids are growing up here. We're going to the stores. We're helping out others. After work hours, we do a lot. I do a lot of work after work, which I try to put in and make sure other people are taken care of. And it's, it's an honor. I just really want to thank the council and everybody, and I really want to actually thank my family for the sacrifice that they've had, because I've missed quite a few Christmases, birthdays, because I've been out there at night. And it's kind of nice when your wife is holding a flashlight and you're 100 foot up a tree with Aaron Clark, and that's the only light you have at night while things are happening during a storm. And that was way back then. And she was not in a city truck. She was in a personal truck. So, but it's the things like that that, you know, that make it happen. And I just, you know, I keep thinking about it, you know, am I going to miss it? Of course I'm going to miss it. Do I miss it now? I just kind of walked into the next day. You know, I've got a lot of things on my plate. I've got a lot of people I want to work with. I've got a lot of adventures I want to do. I want to love my wife. I want to spend some time with her. I want to be with my kids. I want to do a lot of things like that. And I've had it the whole time, but work, you got to go to work. And you got to get there 3 o'clock in the morning. You got to be there. You got to be there. And you work around the clock, and you come home, you get your break, and you get your little rest, and you go back to work. And you have to make sure everything's taken care of. And you have to do that in front of the public, where you have to be seen and in some cases judged. But if you put on your best performance and you're saying and doing the right things and you're teaching and training, it works. And I've been lucky enough to live that way and enjoy everything I do every minute of the day. And I do have fun. And I do put on the challenge with the crew. And it's really good to challenge each other. And, you know, as long as it's within the means, you have fun. And you get the job done, and you learn from it. And Sue, you're totally right. You learn from the storms. You definitely do it. Because right now, we already know. We know mudslides, we know the trees, we know the wires, we know the flooding, we know the stations, we know the sand, we know the trucks have to be ready. We know we might lose Highway One. We know how to shortcut through the city. You know all these things, and you... I guess the way I lived my career is I'm going to teach you everything I know, and if you can take my job, I did my job. And that's the best way to say it. But I've been blessed with this great community, and I'm going to still do what I do. I'm going to start walking the hills. I've never got to walk before. I'm going to do a bunch of different things. But I really want to say thank you to everybody for allowing me to have this time with you. And I'm telling you, enjoy every minute of it. It's worth it. So thank you very much.
If you'll allow us a photo with you.
I think I forgot to mention that Senator Becker's office also sent us a proclamation on behalf of Paul. Thank you, Senator Becker. So last but not least, I have a proclamation to read in recognition of Dominic Albanese. Whereas Sergeant Albanese is retiring from a distinguished public service career with the Pacifica Police Department, serving most recently as a police sergeant and is currently the longest-tenured member with the Pacifica Police Department. And whereas Sergeant Albanese has served over 34 years in law enforcement with the Pacifica Police Department, beginning with his appointment to police officer in November 28, 1998, promoting to the rank of police corporal on June 30, 2005, and police sergeant on November 28, 2015, and serving in the positions field training officer, detective, and hostage negotiator. And whereas Sergeant Albanese has testified in countless criminal court proceedings as a subject matter expert in street drugs and narcotics enforcement, recognized by the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office as a court expert in the use, detection, recognition, and sales of illegal narcotics. And whereas Sergeant Albanese is known for his keen knowledge of Pacifica, relentless pursuit of criminals, and persistent efforts to rid our community of deleterious drugs. And whereas Sergeant Albanese has received countless awards, commendations, and letters of appreciation during his career, including the Captain's Award in 1998 in recognition as the department's Employee of the Year in 1999. And whereas Sergeant Albanese has directly trained, mentored, and led many former and current police officers and his influence in their careers and this department will endure into the coming decades, now, therefore, I, Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby extend our grateful thanks and appreciation to Sergeant Dominic Albanese for 34 years of dedicated and distinguished service to the City of Pacifica, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors, done this ninth day of January 2023.
So I believe Sergeant Albanese is not with us tonight. However, if anyone has anything they want to say, if any of the callers on the phone have anything they want to say, open public comment.
There are no dial-ins.
Councilmember, I'll close public comment then. Council, anyone have a comment?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Thank you so much, Sergeant Albanese. You always know that you're a really good police officer when the young people are afraid of you. And so that's what I remember the most, is that, you know, when we were young and doing bad things, that that was the cop to watch out for. And so thank you so much for taking care of all of us because we made it through alive. And we appreciate all your years of service.
I'm just grateful, too. 34 years of service for our community, keeping our community safe, and really, really wishing you well in your future endeavors.
Councilmember Battlehouse?
34 years is forever. I admire you so much. I'm glad I never came across you on the streets because... I might be in trouble. But I appreciate so much the time that you spent here, and thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Councilmember Bowles.
Putting your life on the line for 34 years for our community is a huge undertaking and shows real love and dedication to our community. Thank you. I'm glad you made it out alive and hope you really enjoy your retirement.
I'm going to echo what my fellow councilmember said. I'm struck that tonight we're honoring three people who, for all intents and purposes, have given a small lifetime to our community. It's no small thing to sign up to put your own safety and well-being potentially overtly at risk the way you have. And you have served this community to make it a safer place. And while it may be that young people did not want to cross your path, it strikes me very much that if this impression was left, it was done by you in order to ensure their safety and that they may walk a better path. So thank you for your service to our community. And enjoy your retirement well-earned. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the consent calendar at this time. Councilmembers, do any of you have an item you wish to pull from consent for discussion?
I think I just have a comment to make on one of the items. Is that okay, or?
That's fine, yes.
Okay. Just a comment? Okay, great. So I just wanted to make a comment on item number 15. And I just, just to say, like, for the record, that I think anything that has to do with this particular topic should probably not be on consent because I think that our community deserves the opportunity to be able to talk about it in every single stage of development. And so I just wanted to make sure that that got on the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Beer. I'm going to open at this time to public comments on any item on consent. I have one card from Pam Welty. And if anybody else would like to speak, please fill out a card in the back of the room and bring it up for this or any other item. And for those who are watching at home, if you're calling in, please press star five to raise your hand.
I feel so short.
And please, please-
Is there a step there?
There should be a box.
Where's the step? That's okay. I'll stand on my tiptoes.
The microphone bends. Please state your name for the record before you begin.
Sure. Hi, I am Pam Welty. Good evening. I want to talk about consent item number five, your emergency pump. So the local emergency at the Lindemar Pump Station began in 2020. And here we are again renewing that emergency two, almost three years later. And that's a sad statement. We who live on Anza and Arguelo would like to remind you all that we have wet proof that the emergency remains. We have soaked cars, flooded driveways, and muddy yards that even today are still wet from the flood, the most recent flood that occurred last Saturday, the 31st. We don't expect answers tonight, but we do hope and expect some movement on this emergency two years later. And we look forward to hearing more from all of you, everyone, in the very near future. Please don't forget us on Anza and Arguelo that we flood every single storm. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Would anyone else like to speak? Emily, is-
Emily, is there anyone on the line?
There's no one on the line.
I'll give it another moment to make sure. Now, close public comment and bring it back to council. City manager, if I might ask a clarifying question or two in regards to item number five? I don't feel the need to pull it for discussion, but I would like to ask a couple questions. So first of all, we had some flooding in Ms. Welty's neighborhood recently. Can you tell us about, my understanding is essentially it was the Lindemar Pump that was malfunctioning that helped to create some of the flooding that occurred? Can you tell us whether or not the ANZA pump worked? The second question is going to be where we are in terms of fixing the ANZA pump station and how soon that state of emergency will be over.
Sure. Why don't I start, and then if I leave out any details, there are Public Works representatives here that can add to what I provide. I do want to clarify, and I realize it's rather confusing, and I know that for Ms. Welty and other neighbors, we've offered to provide a tour of the facilities. So item, item five, the ANZA pump station is, and that emergency is separate from the, you know, storm emergency that we just declared, but the pump malfunction issue we had was at the Lindemar Pump Station. So the ANZA pump station emergency was from the fire that destroyed the contents of the pump station two years ago, and that's been an incredibly complex replacement, restoration, emergency project. It's taken a long time, not the least of which was due to supply chain issues related to the technology that's needed in that. However, that is proceeding. I don't know exactly. I believe that the project is wrapping up for completion in the spring. That's an estimate currently, and Deputy Public Works Director Aguilar could correct that. But it's underway and working on the necessary emergency repairs to the ANZA pump station. The Lindemar Pump Station, which the bypass pump that would allow, that was the key mechanism to, at the last minute emergency to prevent flooding, that's what failed unexpectedly. And in these big storms, things like this do happen, and that was part of the problem there for the flooding and the sanitary sewer overflow on ANZA. So we have an incredible, robust and aggressive capital program, five-year capital program, and capital funding that is underway for all of this wastewater equipment over the next five years. And I'll speak more to sort of general comments about that and storm update during my comments later on the agenda, but hopefully that answers the question you were asking.
I think so, and just so that I can give my lay understanding, the ANZA pump station, the timeline currently says we should be fixed by about spring or so. And then, in terms of what failed on New Year's Eve, it was the bypass pump of the Lindemar Pump Station, and that's why the substantial flooding apparently occurred?
Correct. Correct. And I just am going to, Deputy Director Aguilar is here to correct if I have the estimated timeline incorrect.
Good evening, this is Marie Aguilar, Deputy Director for Wastewater. Yeah, I just actually just texted the engineering manager to talk, to ask about the completion, expected completion for the ANZA pump station. It is expected around May or June, and that's because of the supply chain that we were having. There were some delays on some of the equipment that we were supposed to have received before the end of the year, and now it's really, there's no definite date, but according to Nelson, who is Nelson Slater, who's our engineering manager, he said that he gives a date of May to June 2023.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions about consent? Anyone want to make a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second, and I have a light from Councilmember Bowles. Did you have any comment or question you wanted to make before we vote?
Sorry, I'm a little slow.
No, you're good. Okay.
No worries.
Just one issue in terms of the vote is that I was not there at the December 12 meeting, so I'm not sure how I vote on most of it, but not that part of it. So Sarah can maybe help clarify that. And then, secondly, just on number 15 also, just because I know that there's a lot of concern in the community about that project and the next steps, and I was just hoping for a quick verbal description of the EIR process, kind of what's typically included in an approximate timeline, just so we can give the community a little bit of a heads-up. Thank you.
I see Planning Director approaching. I appreciate that we received a comment from the public around that item, and now may not be the most advantageous time to discuss the issues raised, but perhaps one would be the correct time that we will get to have those community concerns aired.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Planning Director Christian Murdock. So to start, the item before the council tonight is a routine administrative item that we frequently ask the city council to do, and that's to authorize a contract for the city to bring on a consultant to perform the expert technical work that's required to prepare a California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, analysis. In this instance, we have identified that an environmental impact report, or EIR, is appropriate for this development project. The EIR process begins once a project has been deemed complete. That's a term of art in planning, which means we've received all of the required information to understand the project and all information required by the municipal code or other laws to describe the activity that's proposed to be undertaken. And so once we understand the totality of the project, we not only determine all of the permits that would be required, we then determine what level of environmental review will be required. As mentioned, an EIR is appropriate for this project, which means we've identified the consultant, we've prepared the contract, and we're asking for city council authorization. Once we have the authorization to actually expend the funds to prepare the EIR, we will receive a deposit from the project applicant who will fund the preparation of the EIR, and then we will prepare what's known as a notice of preparation. It's a public announcement. It's sent to the state clearinghouse to send to all relevant state agencies. And then we will also publish that and distribute it through other channels to let the community know the city has identified that an EIR should be prepared to begin the public process. There's typically a 30-day comment period for input on the range of environmental impacts that are appropriate to analyze based on the project in question. There's also commonly what's called a scoping meeting, which is a public meeting where members of the community and public agencies can provide their input on areas of potential environmental impacts that are concerning to them, that they believe should be evaluated in the EIR. Once we've received all that input and the 30-day scoping period has ended, the city will determine the full extent of the environmental issue areas that will be analyzed in the EIR, and then commence the technical work to actually study those impact areas. That process and timeline can vary depending on the number, range, and complexity of those environmental impact areas. In this instance, for this project, the consultant estimates approximately eight months to prepare the draft EIR, based on what we understand the likely areas of interest and environmental impacts to be. That could expand depending on the type of input we receive during the notice of preparation process. Once the EIR, the draft EIR has been prepared, and draft doesn't mean, you know, partially complete, again, it's a term of art and a term of law in SEQA, to mean the first stage of the environmental review document for an EIR. That is then made available to the public upon publication of what's called a notice of availability, or NOA. That begins a 45-day public review and comment period on the draft EIR, for the public to offer their comments and for public agencies to provide their comments on the sufficiency of the environmental impact analysis in the document. So if you'll think back to that first step, the community and public agencies identify areas to be analyzed, the city then determines what those will be in the final form, then the city goes off and studies those, in this case with the help of its consultant, and then the public and public agencies have an opportunity to comment on the sufficiency of that analysis. And so once those public comments have been received and the 45-day comment period ends, then the city will analyze those comments and prepare responses to comments, along with other information commonly, including what's known as a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, and a final EIR that includes any revisions to the draft in response to the public comments, and then package that up into what's known as the final EIR. And so then that final EIR is taken through the public process, along with any public hearings on the project permits in question. SEQA does not require public hearings on the environmental documents, that's a common misconception, but it does state where public hearings will occur on the project that's being undertaken, in this case Planning Commission and City Council public hearings, that the SEQA document should be considered as a part of that public hearing process. And so that will, in this case, provide additional public input opportunities at both of those public hearings, at the Planning Commission and the City Council. And then I should say, the final step in the SEQA process anyways is for the decision-making body, whether the Planning Commission or the City Council, or in some cases both, to adopt and certify the final environmental impact report after considering the totality of the record and any public comments that have been submitted.
Thank you, Director. Any other comments before we vote?
Mayor Big Stick, Councilmember Bowles had a question about the minutes.
Ah, yes, please.
So Councilmember Bowles, even though you were not in attendance at that meeting, you can go ahead and approve the minutes as a matter of business if you feel that it's, you've maybe had an opportunity to review the minutes and feel they're accurate, or you listened to the meeting and believe the minutes to be an accurate reflection of the meeting itself.
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
The motion to approve the consent calendar was made by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Mayor Protem Baderlas. I'll start the roll call vote. Councilmember Bowles?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baderlas?
Yes.
Mayor Big Stick?
Yes.
And the consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay, so next up is oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however that during oral communications, portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. We appreciate it when you don't pick at particular members. Council members will not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications, so if you ask us a question directly in real time, we're not going to respond directly, though we do have an opportunity afterwards to clarify something. Sometimes we will do that. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker, and we always request that if you are kind in your tone, we will hear you much better. That having been said, I have a card from Anita Reese, and if anybody else wishes to make a comment, please fill out a card in the back, or if you're calling in tonight, please press star five to raise your hand.
So I just wanted to give some quick updates about the Pacifica Resource Center. We continue to be open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 9 to 5, and Wednesday's 9 to 7, Friday 9 to 1, and we are closed 12:30 to 1:30 for lunch, Monday through Thursday. We'll also be open on Saturday, January 28, from 9 to 1 for our general services, and we're also launching our tax services that day. So if you'd like no-cost tax preparation services, we have appointments available beginning on January 28th, then Wednesday evenings, 3 to 7 thereafter. And we do encourage folks to drop off their tax documents, so if those days don't work for you, you can always drop them off. We'll prepare them, we'll call you, we'll have you come back and pick them up, we'll go over them. So we'll be able to make it work. So feel free to give us a call now to schedule appointments anytime, starting January 28th. Next, our next grocery distribution is on Wednesday, January 25th, at the American Legion Hall, which is at 555 Buell. We're also ramping up our grocery deliveries starting this week, so we should be able to deliver if folks can't make it to the distribution on the 25th. This holiday season, we were able to help with support from our holiday sponsors, 191 children from 94 families, so we were very happy to be able to increase the number of folks that we've been able to serve this year. I also wanted to mention that the county's inclement weather program for folks who are unhoused has been activated, and has been activated since last Tuesday. It's been activated tonight and will likely be activated tomorrow. And what that means is when those activations happen, folks who are unhoused have access to additional shelter beds, as well as when those shelter beds are filled, a hotel stay. So if you know folks who are unhoused who could use this service, please have them come to us so that we can refer them to the inclement weather program. So you can do that by contacting our Unhoused on the Coast Outreach staff by email at ucutreach@pacresourcecenter.org or at 650-387-4458. That is the cell number for one of our outreach specialists. And then for all other services and supports, please call us at 650-738-7470, or by email at info@pacresourcecenter.org, or on our website at pacresourcecenter.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
We have two raised hands.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, did you have another speaker card?
I do not have another speaker card.
So we have the first phone number ending in 9309, and the second phone number ending in 7310.
Okay, so number ending in 9309, please press star six to unmute. It does take a moment after you press star six, so give it that time to unmute, and please state your name for the record before you begin.
Hello, am I being heard?
You are.
Thank you. My name is Clifford Lawrence. I'm sorry I can't be with you this evening. I do want to wish a Happy New Year to all and to our new members on board, and also our thanks to those who have worked so hard for this community and retiring. Quick note for you tonight, as somebody who is listening to you remotely, I'd like to report this. Interestingly enough, the phone is actually in sequence of time ahead of everything. Next would be the streaming, but the streaming is breaking. It's running a loop about two minutes and it quits, and you have to recycle it, so somebody needs to pay attention to that. Other than that, channel six is fine, but it is the longest in the delays of those presentations. So I hope to see you in the future, and again, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Happy New Year, Cliff. Thank you. And which was the next number, Emily?
Next number is 7310.
Number ending 7310, please press star six to unmute and give it a moment, and please state your name for the record when you have unmuted.
Happy New Year, everyone. Suzanne Moore from the Manor District. And as we approach the draft of our housing element, we want to expand our tools to address the housing crisis. Sadly, our RENA goals in the past weren't achieved, and what we really desperately need is below-market rate housing. And this housing deficit has directly contributed to Pacifica's displacement and homelessness. Our housing element should include policies successfully used by other communities to prevent displacement, preserve existing affordable housing, and build much-needed supportive housing and below-market rate housing. And these are the policies that are consistent with the state mandates for fair housing, incorporate the recommendations of the Association of Bay Area Governments to address our housing crisis, and reflect current needs in Pacifica. I think it's important that our housing element assessment should acknowledge data from county legal aid agencies that reflect that the increase, that there's been an increase of evictions countywide. And the most common reason that's been given to those who are working with those folks is the loss of income due to the economic downturn of COVID. And sadly, those with low income have been disproportionately impacted. We should also include data from the Pacifica Resource Center, and a recent letter from PRC President of the Board reports that the PRC provided groceries to PRC President of the Board reports that the PRC provided groceries to nearly 104,000 Pacificans, which was a 418% increase from last year. So an appropriate response to our identified needs could be to prevent displacement and homelessness by strengthening the State Just Cause Ordinance and apply it from day one in Pacifica, strengthen the substantial renovation ordinance and make sure permits are pulled before displacement, grant higher reimbursement to tenants for evictions without cause, and restrict Airbnb conversions if Pacifica's vacancy rate is below 5%. And our appropriate response to identify needs could be to provide policies that establish pathways to work with nonprofits who specialize in housing preservation and low-income housing, and create a dedicated housing fund with monies from a vacancy tax, title transfer fees, and in-lug fees. We have a genuine opportunity with this housing element to expand the tools in our housing tool belt that can make a difference in our community. Thank you all, and again, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Suzanne. Happy New Year. Anyone else on the line?
There are no other raised hands.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Then I will close public comment and bring it back to council for council communications. Please press your button if you'd like to speak. Who wants to go first? Not all at once.
Not all at once.
Very good. We will start with Councilmember Bowles.
I got to go to my first League of Century Cities dinner in December, and for all of you who don't know, this is where councils and leadership in San Mateo County all gather once a month for dinner, and so we get to learn what's happening in other cities and hopefully learn other things that we can bring back to Pacifica as well. And so this one was a fun more Christmas party, but this happens every month. And, oh, and I want to thank Mike O'Neill specifically for that night, because he took me under his wing and was introducing me around, and that was really very kind of him, because I didn't know anybody. And so mostly I've been I've been meeting with staff for training in my new role, and still have a bit to do there, and meeting with constituents about a lot of different issues. I'm also, I've been talking with the Rotary Club, and they have, as an international organization, taken on climate change as one of their main project goals this year. So I'm very excited about that, and my husband and I will be doing a presentation for them next Tuesday on net-zero construction, so invite people to that if you can come. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Baderlas?
I served the seniors at their New Year's buffet, which was an amazing meal cooked by our chef, and they expected about 90 people there, there were about 120 people there. So, and Pacificans Care actually gave every person there a gift card for Grocery Outlet, they combined with Grocery Outlet, and it was a really generous thing to do for every person there, and that was amazing, and they had filets, so it was a good meal. I know, so you guys missed something. I spent a lot of time talking to people by email about what was happening. I drove around the city, checked to see if there was sand, all the various things, trees down here and there. I did try to stay home as much as possible, like we were told to do, but there were times when I needed to go out and just see what was going on, and I'm sure all of us did that. And I spent a lot of time doing that, and I went to every one of the county. The county had emergency meetings all every day last week, and they were very helpful, down to the weather forecasts, the NOAA weather forecast, so we actually got accurate weather and letting us know what was going on around in the other cities, and it's always really helpful to hear that from the county. And our city provided us with updates many times a day also, and it was really helpful. And I know I said on Facebook, if anybody read, I just want to give thanks to everyone, the city, employees, police, fire, Public Works, recology, God, PG&E, I could go on and on, and PBNR, everybody, and just thank you all for all of your good service during the time when we were going through drama, and hopefully we don't have to suffer too much more. Thanks.
Councilmember Beer?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo the thank yous for everyone, for Public Works, Recology, and Fire, and Safety, everybody, for pulling together and doing the very best that we could for our community. I also want to thank the residents of Anza and Arguello, and you guys are here in the audience, for pulling together and mobilizing your neighbors and approaching the city in such a respectful, calm, and collaborative way. Like, that's how I think we all should be, and so I really appreciate that. So thank you again. I also attended all of the San Mateo County storm briefing meetings, except for one, the last one I didn't go to, but those emergency meetings started during COVID, and so they have all the electeds and city managers from across the county, and all of the information is shared with us. It's a really wonderful way for us to understand where to go, what to do, you know, what kind of information to share with our community. It's really, really helpful. And over break, which I really needed, and it was really nice to have a break, I did some things. Went to Council of Cities in Colma, and welcome, Councilmember Bowles, we're super happy to have you, and welcome to our new mayor as well, you're going to do a great job. That's always fun, and Mary Ann Nyheart was a guest that night, so we got to spend some time with Mary Ann, which was really, really nice. I attended Tom Piccolati's retirement party after 25 years on the North Coast County Water District Board, so thank you, Tom. I attended the Mary Manor Stroll, which was all, oh, you were there too, every time, everywhere I went, they were like, oh, Christine was just here, oh, Christine was just here. So I was hot on your trail that day, but I never saw you. But it was really wonderful to see all the makers and the artists in our community come together, and really to go to each one of their homes and go in their backyards and see all the different kinds of art that they're producing. It's really wonderful what the makers are doing in our community. We had our Pacifica Pride meeting, we are well on our way to beginning to raise funds, and we're working on the parade and the festival, so there'll be more information to come. Thank you, Councilmember Beckmeyer, for helping with that, I'm so glad we get to do that together. I listened to Ray Mueller swearing in and was able to do some public comment for him, so welcome to Ray, we're so happy that you won. I spent time with my interns, which was great, we went to the movies, you know, had dinner, it was really nice. I rode on the back of a Harley-Davidson during the Pacifica Hot Rod's Christmas toy cruise, so that was super fun. I'll probably go in a truck or something next time. And part of that was also to honor Jeff Shives, who was a really good friend of ours and part of the Pacifica Hot Rods for a long time, who passed away recently, so I wanted to make sure to mention that. Last year during the toy cruise, we actually collected the toys together and brought them to the Resource Center, so I thought about him a lot this year because he wasn't able to be with us. So, what else do I have? I think that's about it. If it's okay with the mayor and council, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in honor of Ron Hanson, who was a man that I grew up with ever since kindergarten, and he passed away recently. I attended his memorial service yesterday, which was so well-attended. Thank you to the Pacifica Moose Lodge. Every single person that I grew up with was there, and it was just really beautiful. So Ron, love you, and I miss you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Thank you. I just want to say that having a break was also something I needed, I also needed, and I took advantage of it. It was, most of the meetings that I normally attend were suspended, and I was able to spend some time with my family. Both of my boys came from out of town, and it was just really, really nice to be with family, relaxing, and trying to regroup and get ready for a new year. In conjunction with that, and over that, some of that time, were some significant storms that we are all aware of and lived through. I wasn't in town for part of it, and I was, I think, driving the city manager a tiny bit crazy, maybe I shouldn't speak for him, but, you know, I kept asking questions, and I always say to him, I know, I know, I need to read my email in the reverse order, because I start at the top and go, what about this, what about this, and then I scroll down, I'm like, oh, yeah, oh, oh, two hours ago someone said that. I kept asking, is the EOC open, is the EOC open? And it's like, we have a virtual EOC, it's working. I was like, okay. And I have to thank, I was going to say the same thing, Mary, I almost said Mayor Beer, Councilmember Beer, about the tremendous outpouring of information and support from the community on what's going on, what's happening in my neighborhood, there's a problem, I need help. Hearing from people and being able to directly connect people with services is so critical. And sometimes people contact us thinking we have more power, or more authority, or more something, and we don't, in terms of getting the word to the important services that need to hear from you. So I'm forever giving the Department of, the Police Department's phone number out. I had a neighbor, not a neighbor, a friend contact me over the weekend because there was a downed line, and she was, what do I do? I'm all, contact the PPD, put it in your phone, because the same thing happened to me that happened to her. I saw a line when I was down on Anza, and I don't know what it was, it was a downed line. And I'm like texting, I'm texting Lisa and Kevin, there's a line, just want you to know, this is the address, and as I'm doing that, before I can even press send, here comes the PPD along this way, and thankfully, to the officer, I forgot his name, who helped me, he pointed out, these lines are communications lines, these lines are generally the live-wire lines. And, you know, just as he was moving his vehicle over, here comes the fire truck around the corner to take care of it. And so just the services were evident and were happening, the coordination was happening. I know there was a big need all over the Bay Area, not just in Pacifica, and not just in San Mateo County, for sandbags and sand. And there was, you know, in the Anza Arguello neighborhood, neighbors offered part of their property as staging. Here, put sandbags here for this neighborhood to come pick up. It was a really coming together, and I'm not diminishing the challenges that happened in that neighborhood at all, but we're much better when we pull together and we figure out where the problems are and how we can solve them, and what next steps. You know, we may not have the perfect solution today, right now, but we learned something. Just as I was speaking earlier about Paul, the storms bring us to our very best place. We learn what we need to know, we learn where we weren't ready, and we are better for it moving forward. So enough about that, except that the process goes on. And it specifically, with regard to Anza and Arguello, we are working on a neighborhood meeting in the next couple of weeks, which will happen. In terms of my regular committee and commission and all kinds of obligations, my beautification advisory committee did not meet, not my, our beautification advisory committee did not meet, it was scheduled for Wednesday, the 4th, and appropriately, this decision was made not to have that meeting that particular night, to have people physically driving to the Public Works Department to physically hold that meeting in person, made no sense. So I have nothing to report there. I did get a chance to go to Council of Cities, which was fantastic, as always, put it on your calendar for next year and every other year, because that is a really fun one. But every month, it's a great opportunity, as you said, to continuously learn from other communities. So looking forward to that. I'm not going to be attending new mayors and council members' meeting coming up in a week or two?
A week?
A week. Wow. But enjoy it. I remember when I went, right after I was elected, it was so invaluable. When we went, yes, soak it up, just bring a lot of notebooks and pens and highlighters. That's my recommendation. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beckmeyer. So, New Year, old war, I begin by sending my prayers to Ukraine. They are facing, once again, a very cold winter, as somebody who, as near as I can tell, is nothing more than a bully relentlessly continues to harass them needlessly. At least, that's my POV. Welcome to our new Councilmember Bowles. Good to have you with us. I too attended the Council of Cities Dinner in Colma. It was amazing to see our old friend and colleague, Mary Ann Nyheart, I say that as though I ever served up here with her, as though I should be so lucky. She received duly a standing ovation that she was a guest of one of the attendees, and it was really heartwarming to see her there. I got to experience my first city selection committee, which is when basically a roomful of mayors gets together and hashes out various regional boards, so that was fascinating, and I get to experience something like that again tomorrow morning, so I look forward to that. I attended the Jefferson Union High School District Board reorganization. Supervisor Canepo was there. Also, State Senator Scott Weiner was in attendance, so I had the opportunity to greet him. And then in general, I got to see the new board members and say hello to some of the older board members, like our friend Andy Lee and Kalima. I attended the Menlo Park reorganization, where our good friend and newly-elected county supervisor, Ray Mueller, had his last meeting followed by a very nice reception, took a meeting with State Senator Josh Becker, and shortly thereafter, attended the county reorganization, where again, our good friend Ray Mueller took his seat as county supervisor, along with our other new supervisor, Noelia Corzo. What I was struck by at that reorganization was that in both instances, our newly-elected leaders invoked spirit as a guiding principle in their work, and spoke from the heart, and it was really nice to hear those introductions coming from their hearts, because it demonstrates how they will lead accordingly with the other three remaining supervisors, all of whom have shown tremendous leadership over the years in our county. So welcome to Supervisors Corzo and Mueller. Shortly thereafter, I would have spoken and stayed longer, but there was a meeting that we had between members of the Arguello community and city staff, so that we could try and figure out the best approach after the flooding event that took place on Arguello. I received a message on New Year's Eve, and it was from one of the residents whom sometimes has a great deal to say, but I was struck immediately because he sent me a two-sentence email, one of the sentences being in the subject line itself, we're flooding now, please help Linda Mar now. And that gave me pause, it made me want to immediately jump in my car and go and see this flooding myself. Now, I live on top of a hill, and as I stepped into my car, I fully fathomed the river that was careening down in front of my driveway, and I thought to myself, well, if I have to ford a river to get out of my driveway at the top of a hill, it's probably not wise for my own safety to go down to a place where apparently it's flooding. So I got on the horn with the Director of Public Works immediately and City Manager to try and figure- to try and figure out what was going on. And that's when I learned about a failed bypass pump at the Lindamar Pump House that was corrected as quickly as they could to bring the flooding down. Unfortunately, it was not without a sanitary sewer overflow that occurred simultaneously, the results of which I got to visit the next day on New Year's Day. And my heart immediately fell in with the neighborhood on Argüello that got to experience that charming way to begin a new year. So, first and foremost, my understanding is that that all might not have happened if not for that bypass pump failure. And my understanding is we have an emergency pump replacement order in as of this time so that that can get corrected quickly. Hopefully, that's enough that if our machinery is actually operating, we won't have that kind of flooding. That's not quite good enough, that's a beginning. We need to investigate various actions we can take in between that and figuring out the viability of implementing our new storm drain master plan that we put into effect what, a month ago or so. So in the short term, I'm hoping that that pump replacement solves the problem. In the long term, I fully intend on bringing up at goal-setting the need for funding that project. Of course, we're going to be discussing the other projects then related to the storm drain master plan, but I'm not aware of a SSO sanitary sewer overflow that occurred quite the same way that it happened on Argüello. And if that's the kind of thing happening there, to my mind, that might bring up a priority project, so that'll be discussed at goal-setting. And those are the results of that. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to see our new Sheriff Christina Corpus being inaugurated. It was a wonderful event, a room just absolutely filled with all manner of people, from law enforcement and military to other electeds countywide, to so many citizens who were there to show how happy they were that our new sheriff is in town. And it really was inspiring. One of the speakers who spoke was somebody who had previously been trafficked and had a great deal of substance abuse in her background, whom apparently, according to her, because our Sheriff Corpus cared enough to spend time with her and treat her like a human being, she was able to find it within herself to seek the rehabilitation and help she needed in order to rise to the place that hopefully she can inspire others. And to be sure, I certainly was inspired, as I think the rest of that audience was, by hearing her story. And then subsequently to hear our Sheriff Corpus describing the kind of compassion along with the law enforcement she wishes to bring into the mix, I think that we are in very good hands with somebody who is very eager to place a very positive energy into bringing law enforcement to a place where it can get past those popular television headlines, at least in our region. And we don't have to think about that in our communities. At least, of course, this is the hope. So that's what I have to report out on and I hope everyone is beginning with a good new year, the occasional SSO notwithstanding, and thank you for the members of that neighborhood who are in our audience currently. And that having been said, Staff Communications, please.
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick, Mayor Protem Vaterlos, and Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I know many of the council members talked about storm matters and so that's what I was gonna talk about as well. So I'll go ahead, I had prepared some comments and mine are maybe a little bit different, but touch on some of the same matters, but I did wanna share them. And that has really been the focus since coming back after, after the holidays, well, during the holidays and then continuing. As was mentioned, we learned a lot during the COVID pandemic on a countywide scale about coordination between agencies, in particular, the San Mateo County Emergency Operations Center. And that infrastructure was in place to immediately kick into these countywide briefings about what's happening and many of you participated in that, as did I, and that's very helpful across the county. And, you know, since December 31st, we've had three major storms that led to the proclamation of emergency related to these storms that you ratified tonight, that I signed last week and you ratified tonight. And really, that's now in place to help facilitate reimbursement of expenditures that the city has incurred during these storms and subsequent ones that may continue to come. The New Year's Eve storm brought the largest rainfall and related flooding and, as was mentioned, sanitary sewer overflow impacts, particularly in Lower Lindamar, due to the volume of rain in a very short time and then the failure of that pump. Incidentally, this storm created the largest ever in Pacifica's history, largest ever flow to our wastewater treatment plant at more than 22 million gallons in one 24-hour period. So it was a very intense incident. The then subsequent January 3rd to 4th storm called a bomb cyclone event or bomb genesis cyclone event, there's always new terminology that the meteorologists are coming up with, that really had the largest wind impacts in town, as everyone saw, down trees and power lines, but it didn't bring as much rain that was forecasted. So that was fortunate, we were prepared, but it was fortunate. However, that was also followed the next day by a day of incredibly high surf that battered the California coast, up and down everywhere, more than even in Pacifica, and caused significant, in Pacifica, loads of water and sand on Beach Boulevard and Clarendon, as we saw and many witnessed. And then last night's storm also brought high winds, but less rain, again. Pretty good amount of rain, I don't know what the final total was, but between two and three inches, pretty good amount. At this point, the ground is extremely saturated. Continuing rain is expected, but is not, you know, as high a volume, it's not predicted at this point. And city staff will remain vigilant, as should the community, about trees and signs of any landslabs or slides that exist. So it's an ongoing process right now. I wanted to comment briefly about the system that we had in place. It was mentioned initiating the sort of virtual EOC. We didn't have the need to actually physically activate the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, which, in a big disaster, we call back staff, we get together in one room for a lot of complex planning and emergency response that's run out of the police station conference room that we actually call the Emergency Operations Center room. What we had in place, however, was the equivalent but more efficient use of staff and city resources, which is an emergency command center that North County Fire Authority ran out of their headquarters and we were virtually communicating with everyone. So it functioned extremely well and I just wanted to mention that a lot of people ask, you know, did we open the EOC? And, you know, in this case, we had the ECC, the Emergency Command Center, running. There was great communication between fire, public works, police, and all of the city management and administration during this. And to that point, I wanted to thank all city staff, from police and fire personnel to public works, field services and wastewater staff, to parks, beaches and recreation staff. We had the community center on standby if we needed to open it up as a comfort center, a temporary shelter for anybody that had been displaced. We didn't have to use that, fortunately. And also, in the mix, city administration and departmental management staff, all city staff displayed incredible energy in preparing for and responding to these storms to keep the residents of Pacifica as safe as possible. And also to the community, as the council members mentioned, because the community is critical in being cautious, vigilant about safety issues that are out there, that they observe. To that point, you know, vigilant about signing up for San Mateo County Alert so that you know where road closures are happening, you know, it's texted right to your phone, that all of that is very important in working as a team together during these difficult emergencies. In addition to the community members, I just wanna point out thanking their understanding and patience about the inconvenience that such storms can cause. To close, I did wanna talk, you know, about what the city continues to do. So we're continuing to work aggressively on storm drainage and wastewater infrastructure to make Pacifica safer. The council recently approved, as was mentioned, the Storm Drainage Master Plan, which will serve as a blueprint to guide prioritization of projects and funding searches for the tens of millions of dollars that are needed for such projects. And we're not alone in that search. Stormwater drainage infrastructure is an incredibly challenging area of infrastructure financing for local governments and all the cities share that challenge and concern. The council has also approved an aggressive wastewater capital program with corresponding rate increases last year to fund the significant wastewater infrastructure improvements that are needed. In addition, I'd like to add that the community supported the half-cent transactions and use tax measure, Measure Y, this November, and that plays a part here too, because that is a critical financial sustainability measure so that the city can maintain what are our current level of services. Without Measure Y, our structural deficit projections are, we next storm cycle may have not been able to have as many staff that are out there responding. And in this case, we basically had all staff working to respond. So Measure Y, as an ongoing operating funding measure, really plays an important piece to this kind of public safety and emergency response. You know, more funding has been put into the city's infrastructure needs in the last five years, probably than any time previously. It's been an incredible focus of the recent councils, it will continue to be, I know, and it's a focus of mine and city staff. And so we'll remain committed to these improvements in order to make Pacifica a sustainable and resilient community into future decades. And it's gonna be challenging, but we're committed to working on it. So those are the comments I wanted to make about these storms and we'll see what future weeks bring for storms as well. But, you know, I had been saying that whether it really applies here or not, I don't know, but I like to say, you know, that chance favors the prepared. So that's our goal. And I don't have really any other comments to make other than that. Thank you.
That was all. The point is well taken that hopefully we get to a point when it doesn't take a fire in our pump house or an engine going out during a storm before we're able to start rehabilitating our antiquated infrastructure and I look forward to getting to that point. I don't think I mentioned it adequately during my comments, but thank you, staff, police, fire, public works, and also the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Department for the work you did during the storm. I'm always amazed. I'm perpetually amazed by our police, fire and public works. I was equally amazed this round by the work that PBNR actually was doing to coordinate the various programs for young folk and older folk and they play a significant role in what happened during the storm. So thank you, departments. I was also on those county calls that my fellow council members mentioned and I just wanted to also briefly mention Nancy McGee, who's the Superintendent of Public Instruction on those county calls. She was giving a robust understanding of what was going on in our schools, so it was all hands on deck and everyone was playing their part. Councilmember Beckmeyer?
If I may, thank you, Mayor. City Manager, I have something, I apologize for not sending this to you before and I realize it's a bit of a surprise, but I do wanna ask for an update, as soon as is practicable, about the creek. About, and by the creek, I mean San Pedro Creek. Because I received a lot, not surprisingly, being in District 5, I received a lot of concern, a lot of calls, a lot of anxiety about the water levels as they were rising and as, you know, we have a number of backyards that open right onto the creek, to the creek banks. And I heard statements made about they are supposed to be clearing the vegetation. And when I hear that from constituents, I appreciate that they, the constituents see somebody doing work. And I don't always know that that's actually the city of Pacifica. And so in my response to those comments, I said, they who? You know, do you know who they are that did this work in the past? And so I'm just asking for some kind of update on what the maintenance of the vegetation in the creek, in the creek area is? What's allowed? I know we have fish and wildlife, we have coastal commission in parts of that area, but the very clear statement I got was that eight to 10 years ago, there was routinely vegetation being cut back. And their impression, the impression of some of the constituents in Lower Lindamar is that that hasn't been happening at the level it should be or the degree to which it should be and that it would help to stem the flow, I guess, because it did come up to backyards and across backyards to front yards and streets in some of the Lower Lindamar areas on Flores. So I just wanna ask that question for a future update, at whatever point is, you know, appropriate and whatever the resources are that are brought to bear on that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I also got those calls.
Thank you, Councilmember Beckmeyer. So we have no public hearings this evening, we have one consideration item. I think before we delve into it, I'm going to call for a five minutes recess for a bio break and then we'll get on with it.
So the video's not working? Does that matter? Does that matter?
Video's not working?
No.
Uh-oh.
It's not popping on at all.
Oh, we don't have.
(music)
Councilmember Bowles, please return to the dais. Thank you. Doki. And I see the feed returned, so too shall I begin. What? What? Are we rolling? Welcome back to the January 9th City Council meeting. The time is now 8:56. I gave it a few more minutes because we were experiencing some technical difficulty with And now that we're back, if anybody at home missed anything, when they play it back later or when they post it to YouTube, the full recording will be there, and we apologize for the disruption. And that having been said, next up, we have a consideration item, the 2023 City Council Liaison and Committee Assignments. Can we have a staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, this agenda item is for the purpose of designating the 2023 City Council Liaison and Committee Assignments. Each year, the council determines which of its members will represent the city in relation to a variety of regional agencies, joint powers, authorities, boards, committees, commissions, and community organizations. Attachment A on this shows the current designations that were for the 2022 year, and those highlighted show the positions where former councilmember O'Neill held those positions. The format has been updated to expand to show the type of role that the council member or members play on the organization or agency that's designated. In some cases, the council member will serve as a voting member of the body. In other cases, the council member may act on behalf of the full council and represent a majority viewpoint on matters that directly affect the city of Pacifica as a liaison to the designated group, so maybe just an observing role and providing information on behalf of the city and vice versa, rather than as a voting member of the body. There's agency, there's agencies that are notated with an asterisk where the appointment is not designated by the city council, but is designated by another agency or body, such as the City Selection Committee that Mayor Big Stick referred to earlier this evening. Attachment B provides some more descriptions on the listed bodies, committees, and commissions. The council representatives as liaisons to the city of Pacifica committees and commissions are included on this list as well. And also identified are the currently active City Council ad hoc subcommittees. So the council discussion this evening will be to discuss the representatives that are under the purview of the city council to designate for either, some include a primary representative as an alternate and as well as an alternate representative, and the role and meeting information and a web link, if appropriate, for more information is notated on the list as well. And with that, I'll take any councilmember questions prior to your deliberations on selections.
So after a public comment, we'll suss out who gets what assignment. Do we have any questions for staff about anything, what any of the committees or commissions do or any part of the process? Questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If you are calling in, please press star five to raise your hand, and we will call you by the last four digits of your phone number. Appreciating there's a delay, I'll give it an extra minute to see if anyone calls in. I don't have any cards in front of me now, but if anyone in the audience has a comment to make, please fill out a card in the back of the room and bring it up, and we'll be happy to call you to speak.
We have one caller, but no raised hands.
Give it another few seconds. I appreciate there is a time delay. And I will close public comment and bring it back to council. That brings us to council deliberation. In terms of process, I figure we can just kind of go down the list and check them off one by one.
Sounds good.
Starting with A-BAG General Assembly Delegate, where I see my name and Councilmember Beckmeyer's name.
I'm happy to continue as alternate. If you want to continue as A-BAG rep, what's your pleasure?
It was a pretty easygoing meeting for that one meeting. I kind of feel like a drop in the ocean when you're at the major one, at least in the Zoom format. Moving on to Airport Community Roundtable, Councilmember O'Neill was our representative. Councilmember Bowles?
Yeah, I'm willing to serve as the representative on that committee. I know it's an important issue to my community.
It's appreciated. It is an important issue, and it's my understanding a position that involves creative thinking in order to try and make heads or tails out of a tricky situation.
Right.
So thank you for stepping up for that one.
Thank you.
I have, as current CCAG representatives, councilmember, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Beckmeyer. Any, both good?
It's okay with me. Do you have an interest, Mr. Mayor, any interest in that one at all?
If the two of you are okay right now, I'm okay.
Okay.
Down the line, I might have an interest, but right now...
Got it. Okay.
Okay, so the council alternate to the Colma Creek Flood Control Citizens Advisory Committee was Mike.
They haven't been meeting. Oh, sorry.
Other Mike.
Not Mike. My. Colma Creek hasn't been meeting since the flood sea level rise committee. So, I mean, I'll stay there if they call a meeting, but they haven't called any meetings. Maybe because of the flooding, they might.
They might.
So I'll hang in there.
That's true.
Sarah, do you have any insight on that one?
Repeat the question, please.
Do you have any insight as to whether or not that particular committee is still meeting, or have they disbanded, do you know?
I, my understanding is, I haven't heard that they've disbanded, but I believe it's the One Shoreline Committee that has been meeting more regularly.
Like, has One Shoreline taken the place of Colma Creek? Do we know?
I don't, I don't know officially. I haven't heard that Colma Creek has disbanded officially.
Okay.
I'll find out.
Thank you, and let's assign an alternate until we know one way or the other. It was Mike's position.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
So Councilmember Bowles, you're okay with that one? Okay.
I'm curious, because you brought up One Shoreline, is there, like, liaison commission, like, positions for that, or how's it working?
It's a C, it's, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
It's a, it's a council cities voted thing, isn't it?
It's a CCAG.
CCAG voted thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you apply.
Okay.
And then via CCAG, and then CCAG board makes those.
Okay.
And there were no openings for our district, I think. That's right.
Good, keep an eye out for that. Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, for any given topic, it's informal, and feel free to jump Emergency Services Council, San Mateo County, I'm showing myself as the backup, and are you still good?
Yep.
Okay.
Still good.
I'm still good there. Fog Fest Committee Liaison, Mike was the alternate. So first of all, Councilmember Vaterlaus, do you want to stay on that one?
I'll stay there.
And who would like to be alternate? How often do they meet?
Not often.
Once a month-ish.
Until closer to. At close, when they get closer.
It's more frequent.
Then they meet quite a bit more often. But they kind of just say, "Okay, there's going to be a meeting." Or, or John Beckmeyer calls and says, "Oh, Sue, there's going to be a meeting," since they forget to tell me.
So it's a loose scheduling, you might say. Anybody have interest as the alternate?
I can fill in as alternate if needed. I don't know that I'd be needed, but I'm happy to.
Okay.
For Hart, I have Beer and Vaterlaus, and I know that at City Selection tomorrow, we're going to be designating some candidates for Hart. So Mary, could you help me understand the difference between the Hart positions City Selection is assigning tomorrow and what this one is here on this list?
No, I can't.
Mayor Big Stick?
May I help?
Sue Vaterlaus, you might be able to.
Sarah's jumping in. We're going straight for staff.
The, what's on the agenda for the City Selection Committee tomorrow is selection of the Hart board members. What's on the list here is the Hart, what they call the Member Agency Committee or the MAC, and that is designating councilmember representatives from each of the cities in San Mateo County for this Member Agency Committee. And typically, they, this committee meets annually, maybe once or twice a year, typically once, to review the budget for the Hart. So it's less involved than participation of a Hart board member.
And is that because each agency pays into it? Is that the idea that then all the agencies come together?
Correct, each of the member supporting agencies.
Okay.
And we both went.
Yeah, but I think you were the active member, so maybe we should switch, switch these around.
So Mary, you're shown as being the active member.
Right, but I honestly think that Sue was actually the active member last year.
Oh, okay.
Like, she was the one who was voting and...
Okay. So do you want to keep the representation as it shows on the list, then?
How do you, do you want to flip it?
Yeah, I think we should flip it.
Okay, that's fine.
And if you're appointed, would someone else take the alternate since you're...
It's a different board.
Oh, it's a different meeting.
I just learned that.
Okay, so the council representative will be?
Sue Vaterlaus.
Okay, and you'll be the alternate?
Yeah.
Fine by me. And Hope, similar circumstance?
No, I would like to keep it as is.
Articulation Committee. I know that Mike was there with you, Mary?
He was.
Okay.
Yeah, we both attend.
So Councilmember Beckmeyer expressed some interest to me earlier?
Yeah, I just wanted to, if we can talk about this one for a little bit, and feel free to jump in, city manager, if you have some insight on this. I raised the question when I was discussing these positions with the mayor about the fact that I work for Pacifica School District. And that was brought forward originally as a reason for me not to be part of this articulation committee. And then I went, but wait. Mary and Mike work for Jefferson Union High School District. And Mary works on a project that's paid out through PSD. And so I'm like, no offense, but maybe they think I can't separate my hats or something. Anyway, I just wanted to discuss it from the point of view of is there any issue there? In your experience?
Not at all. Actually, I think it makes it a richer conversation.
I was thinking this.
What do you think, city manager?
Jump in. Any thoughts on that? He's thinking. The wheels are turning.
I am.
Take your time.
I actually don't, I mean, it's hard to say, I guess. Mike was a little bit removed in his, the role he played, I guess, for Jefferson Union. I think it would depend on issues. I mean, you have two Board of Trustees and the superintendent that participate in there. And, you know, I don't think there's any kind of legal or technical conflict. I think it would depend on issues that are discussed from issue to issue.
Well, in that case, then I would like to volunteer for participating on that one.
I'm going to throw one more argument into the works to see if that changes anything whatsoever. What just occurred to me is, essentially, what I heard is, okay, so it's the joint articulation amongst the Water District also, the School District. If the two representatives from council also have a School District perspective, are we losing anything in the, and this is an honest question. Do you feel like there's any loss by having a non-School District perspective represented as a part of the city perspective?
Councilmember Beer, your thought?
Do I think that it loses anything? Is that what you said?
Yeah, so if pretty much all of the perspectives on joint articulation are School District, do you think there's any value by having another perspective coming from the city that is not school oriented?
I think that our newly formed relationship with the Water District is actually really important. And I think that's the only thing I was thinking of when you asked that question. I know you and I have both worked really hard on that. And so having said that, I think we're well represented all the way around.
So if Sue is present, you feel like there's no loss of alternate perspectives?
I don't, unless, if there's other folks who want to talk about it. If you are interested in the position, we can talk about that, right?
I'm willing to serve, but I don't have a burning desire of Sue.
Okay, no burning desire?
Well, I do. I'm willing to step aside if you want to do it, Christine.
You sound like you really want to.
I want to do it.
I would like you to do it.
But do speak up about your burning desires.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
So that having been said, and I think we've got that one sussed out now. I recall now I was hoping to assign a North Coast County Water District Liaison of some sort. I do not see that on this list currently, though I would like it to make a regular place on this list.
Isn't it right there? North Coast Water Authority?
No, he said Water.
Oh, Water.
Roder and CCWD. So specifically, the purpose being, I would like somebody from council to attend the meetings regularly so that they report out at council meetings. When I attended one of their meetings, I learned what the Water District was doing for the first time in the two years I've been here, if not the almost 40 years I've lived in Pacifica. It was terribly illustrative for my understanding, and it would be great to have that knowledge base coming back to rejoin us, to help us inform our perspective a bit. So.
I agree.
First of all, I'd love that to be regularly placed on this list. Are there any legal reasons why we could not do that?
I was just discussing with Assistant City Attorney Wuzano that that's a new addition, and you can make that suggestion. And then when you do the motions for the entire list, council can approve that at the end, rather than having to have a standalone motion to add that and vote on it. I think you can do that at the end.
And is that a motion that comes back later? Or is that a motion we make at the end of the?
No, at the end, you're going to move to adopt the assignments and include in that the addition of that additional liaison assignment.
Can I ask a question? Does anyone know exactly when their meetings are?
1:18 is the next meeting, which is a Wednesday.
Which Wednesday of the month is that?
The third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday of the month.
The same night as OzPAC and Emergency Preparedness?
Ah.
At seven.
Well.
Well.
Maybe we should do the others first and see who's free.
Good call. I agree with that.
We will circle back. Okay, that brings us to North Coast County Fire District. Excuse me, North County Fire Authority, NCFA. North County Fire Authority. I still had NCCWD on the brain.
See?
Right?
That's where I got it.
I would like to continue serving on that board. And Councilmember Beckmeyer expressed interest joining me.
I did, and however, I'm willing to discuss if anyone else is.
Yeah, I'm interested in that one, too.
Okay, we got two vying for it.
I'm not interested in it.
Okay.
Christine?
Oh, discuss.
Yeah?
Yeah. I've just been digging in a lot to the general plan fire issues and with the state CAL FIRE as well. And I would love to keep learning and follow up on those issues.
It's a board that meets once a year. It's basically to reaffirm that we want to maintain the JPA.
Right.
So it's usually the quickest, easiest meeting you're going to attend all year. However, there's also wiggle room to ask questions of the fire chief when he's there in front of us. So, you know, I definitely offer those questions in advance so that he can prepare for the meeting, because usually it's just to reaffirm that we want to maintain the JPA.
You want to do?
I mean, if that's the role, it's not really what I was hoping.
Yeah, it's not as broad-based as you might think.
Yeah, if you have a burning desire.
No, it's okay with me. Go ahead.
Okay, so who's the, or who's doing this with me?
Um, am I?
Oh.
I thought you was.
I thought Christine was here.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, I'll do it. I'll do it. I'm happy to do it.
Bowls for the win.
Bowl for the win. Bowls for the win. Okay. Where are we now?
We're at PCT. And I believe Mary expressed interest in taking over Mike's spot on PCT.
I did.
Okay, I'll stay the alternate.
Any objections from this side? Very good. Mary has it.
Okay.
Pacific Beach Coalition. Mary, do you have a desire to stay the primary representative for Beach Coalition? I know Christine has some interests.
I think, yeah, I'm fine to give that up. Yes, I'm fine to give that up. I participate enough with the School District, so.
Do you want to remain the alternate?
Sure.
Very good. PRC, I would like to remain the representative. And my hunch is Mary would like to remain the alternate.
I would.
Very good. Pacifica School Volunteers. I have Beer and Beckmeyer here.
Yep.
The Peninsula Clean Energy JPA. I am currently the representative for Peninsula Clean Energy. I'd like to stay that. Mary, if you don't mind, I'd like you to consider perhaps relinquishing your alternate seat to Christine.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. I would love that.
Very good.
Yeah, you'll be really good there.
Peninsula Congestion Relief Commute.org, formerly held as the primary by Mr. O'Neill. Anyone have a burning desire to be the representative?
At 8:00 AM.
So Christine?
At 8:00 AM?
Are you able to do it at 8:00 AM, first of all?
I'm not usually good in the mornings. It's not impossible.
It's really commute.org. Let's see.
Yeah. Can maybe we learn a little bit more? My hesitation is that these traffic ones, I've been told, is kind of like the airport, are like long meetings that don't go anywhere where you don't really have much of an impact. Maybe I'm wrong.
Sue Vaterlaus, what do you think about that?
I only went to one of those commute.org meetings.
I do feel like Mike came back with a better, like a better knowledge of SAM Trans in general, no?
It feels like after he came back from those meetings, he would have interesting ideas to throw into the mix.
Yeah.
It seemed like Mike learned a lot from those meetings that then he could apply to other issues that were going on in town.
That's how I feel, too.
So this is mostly SAM Trans, is what you're saying?
Operates a shuttle bus network that supplements SAM Trans's fixed route and shuttle system. Agency is funded and maintained by various local governments and private businesses within the county.
Okay, I'm willing to take it, and it's just quarterly, so.
Okay.
And it says their address is South City, so it's.
It's not Redwood City.
That and that letter we signed on to with San Carlos urging the state to revamp some of the rules around teleconferences. We're hoping that they take that particular revision to heart because it would enable us to then be able to zoom in for those meetings rather than travel around.
That would be great, yeah.
Which makes a lot more sense for regional meetings where any given one of us has to travel a large swath, on the one hand. And on the other hand, especially for something like Congestion Relief Alliance, I would imagine that they're trying to take cars off the road and bring greenhouse gases down, in which case it would make sense that the state might consider that it would be helpful thereto-from to allow us to teleconference in rather than betray the mission of the regional board that we're all serving on. In this case, you'll be serving on, and thank you.
And also, I think it's what you bring to a meeting. Right? So, yeah.
No, yeah, we could use some better transportation, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Sue here is the alternate. So if you can't make one of those morning meetings, you just tap Sue on the shoulder.
Where you live, almost.
She gets up early.
Okay. SMC JPA Advanced Life Support Pre-Hospital Emergency. Mike was the alternate?
I'll keep it. If anybody wants to jump on as alternate. My experience has been while there usually are two meetings listed, it seems like the last couple of years, it's been winnowed down to one meeting, and one has been canceled, so.
Oh, it says January 22nd, meeting canceled.
And that's a 6:30?
2022. The 2022 meeting was canceled, as an example of that.
Okay.
Christine, would you want the alternate position on that? I mean, it's easier.
Sure, as an alternate, yeah.
The SMC Library JPA. So I've been attending the library JPA meetings as Mike's backup pretty regularly over the course of last year. I don't think I missed any of the meetings because the library is important to me, and so I'm learning as much as I can in that alternate role. I got to fill in form a couple of times, but otherwise I would just show up because I wanted to learn stuff. So I very much appreciate taking the lead role on that. If there's no objection, and I'm going to be looking at Councilmember Beckmeyer to tell me whether or not there's objection, because as the librarian on our dais, literally, and as somebody who came into council with a great deal of passion to try help us rehabilitate, you know, to reconstruct so that we have modern facilities that actually meet the needs of our community rather than the worn-down, dilapidated lean-to that we're currently calling home.
What if I'm the alternate and we participate together?
That sounds charming.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good to me. Does it sound good to everybody else?
Yeah.
All right, done.
Next is Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, which is a spot that is assigned by the city selection committee.
Right, so the next one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items are all selected some other way. Is that correct? Am I interpreting that correctly?
That's correct. So the next several, until we get to the section heading of City of Pacifica Committees, Commissions.
Got it.
Are all selected by the outside agencies.
Mayor Big Stick is going to be appointed to LAFCO.
Yeah.
We think that I am going to be appointed. It is not finalized until the vote is taken, though apparently.
He's running unopposed.
Unless someone runs from the floor, that could happen.
It could happen.
Could.
Yeah.
I'm not the kind to be hubristic about my chances.
Correct.
Though I do hope to serve in that function.
Yes.
Okay, so we have Beyondification Advisory Committee, Beckmeyer and Beer. Are we good there?
Councilmembers, before we move on to those, I'd just like to confirm the others, that the placements of the selections are correct and that we're not missing any on other agencies.
So you're just verifying the list as is?
Right.
Beckmeyer and Vaterlaus seem to have their names on those more than anyone else.
I'm confused for a second. Help me out. On congestion management. Didn't we talk about congestion management a minute ago?
We were talking about commute.org. This is the C-CAG.
Resource Management, that one?
No, the Mike O'Neill on the top of page.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So. I'm confused. I mean, I don't need.
Those are usually, you run for that position.
That's what I thought.
And so somebody would run for that position and take Mike's spot.
I get it, but they haven't called for that.
So it's likely that because O'Neill was in that position for the C-CAG congestion management, unless and until a council member from Pacifica is appointed by that body, by C-CAG, for that commission,[1774.74] for that commission, that would come off of the list.
Okay.
For 2023.
Much like LAFCO, City Selection.
Okay, so it's the city selection process. Okay, thank you.
So the.
But it wasn't on the list.
But it wasn't on the list.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the list.
CCAG coming up. Maybe, um, Mike, well, no, because there's a lot of other positions where people came off.
I thought it was on the list, actually, but.
That's what I thought.
Because I talked to Mike about it and the, the problem is it's on Mondays before our council meetings and, and if we have to be here early.
That's the problem with One Shoreline, too.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, I was gonna say, sorry to chime in, I, I, I feel like, because the full name of it is the, um, Congestion Management and Environmental Quality Committee, and I feel like I saw an announcement for that.
Oh, did you?
Maybe there was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the one that recently came out, was it? Yeah, like at the beginning of December.
That we're voting on on Thursday?
On Tuesday?
No, Thursday for CCAG.
Oh, okay, got it.
So there's two regional voting bodies, apparently, one being City Selection, which I get to serve on, and one being CCAG, which, uh, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Vaterlaus gets to serve on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So just verifying then for Sarah's sake, as I understand it, that, uh, Sue V still serves on CCAG Legislative Committee and San Mateo County Recovery Council?
Yes.
And Councilmember Beckmeyer still serves on CCAG Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee and the LCC Coastal Cities Group?
Correct.
So any of it's her? Moving on to Beautification Advisory Committee, Beckmeyer and Beer, are you happy where you are?
Well, I honestly, I've never attended a meeting, not one single time.
I know.
I think that means I'm happy where.
Would someone else like to take the alternate on beautification? I haven't done anything for it.
I have the airport that day.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, I'll say.
Economic Development Committee, Beckmeyer and Beer.
I'm happy.
Me too.
Um, so that brings us to Emergency Preparedness and Safety Committee, uh, where Mike was the alternate. And I am going to request being placed on OSPAC in a couple of, uh, spots down, which would preclude me from being on Emergency Preparedness or attending, uh, NCCWD. So that having been said, um, Councilmember Bowles, I believe you expressed some interest in doing Emergency Preparedness?
Um, I did, and I also expressed interest in OSPAC, so.
Appreciating that also. Um, like I say, I'd like to take the lead on that, if I may be able to.
And they meet the same night?
Yeah, they meet the same night. Sure, I'm happy to.
So it would be a one or the other thing?
Okay.
Okay. And I know you wanted to do OSPAC, so I.
I still like you.
You'd be the alternate on OSPAC?
Not, not if I have another meeting, but. I'm very happy to learn about emergency.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Yeah. And, um, I think part and parcel with, uh, doing the county-wide one also is alternate. They kind of complement each other.
Okay.
Um, and who would like to be alternate then for Emergency Preparedness?
I will, if nobody else wants to.
How come I did it once?
Oh.
Never mind. No, no, no.
No, I think you should be the alternate.
No, I'm fine.
Well, the, the reason you did it was because both Mike and I were both busy that night, and so I, I asked you to.
I have a lot of committees.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you went off the script because you both were busy that night, is what you're saying?
Right.
Ask Sue.
But you also said it's the same night as North County Water. Okay, well, I.
Were you hoping to do North County Water?
If you can't.
No, I'm gonna be doing OSPAC.
Yeah.
Okay.
You need to, Mayor.
Okay, so that leaves two Su's for Emergency Preparedness and.
Two Su's. Sue, do you have anything on the third Wednesday of the month?
I don't know.
Me neither.
And I don't have my.
Make me the alternate.
Yeah, we're asking for you to be alternate.
Okay, I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
So you're OSPAC alternate? SV.
No, Emergency Preparedness alternate.
I mean, that's what I meant. Sorry.
Library Advisory Committee, um, I think we discussed earlier that we want to team up on, on all things library.
Sorry, before we move on, can you clarify the primary and the alternate for Emergency Preparedness?
Primary Bowles, secondary Vaterlaus. Library Advisor, Big Stick and Beckmeyer. The Library Advisory Committee. That brings us to Open Space Parkland Advisory Committee. I think that Mary expressed her intention to be liaison to North Coast County Water District, so I would like to fill that slot, um, especially given the, uh, work plan that we, uh, agreed on during goal-setting last year. I want to become more aware of the dynamics in OSPAC and have a really more robust understanding of what they're asking us in terms of changing their charter and, um, I appreciate that opportunity to go in, form that relationship and have a better understanding.
Okay.
And Sue, you're shown as the alternate. Are you?
I have the time free. I can do it because I'm not busy on the third Wednesday. You have something on the third Wednesday?
Emergency Preparedness.
So, I'll stay on as that?
Okay.
I should be able to make all the meetings, although, you know, things come up, but.
Right.
Okay, so that brings us to the ad-hocs. I don't know that you need anything from us in terms of ad hoc.
You guys are concluding. The one where Mike is on, it's pretty, it's concluded.
Yeah, the bottom one, City Council Rules and Ethics?
Yeah.
Yeah, it said it was done.
While we're there, are we going to have that brought back to us soon, or what's the plan?
Yeah, the Council Rules and Code of Ethics is, uh, scheduled for next council meeting.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
Okay, excuse me?
I should say tentatively scheduled and if not then, then the meeting after.
Depends.
One never can tell.
You never know.
That went into an ominous place.
And I think by the same token, the, um, Council Chamber renovation is virtually done. It's gonna be pictures on the wall and, and, uh.
Oh, but there's the art program.
That's what I was about to say, community art program.
Yeah, we, we had, um, uh, noted in the description there, uh, a timeline of perhaps into the spring because of the community art program component.
Okay, good.
So that's just our last work item, I think, on the list.
Christine, did you get enough? Do you have enough to use?
I think so. I'm gonna be learning a lot.
What did you get? What?
Oh, I've got, uh, well, as the primary, the airport, the Beach Coalition, uh, Emergency Preparedness, um.
PCE.
Yeah, PCE was an alternate, but I would really wanna go to all those with you, if that's okay.
I suspected you might.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you can.
Great.
Okay. You can fight us for one of them if you want. It's okay. I brought brass knuckles.
No, I'm glad to hear what you're saying about OSPAC because.
Chief Stratton, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
So, North Coast County Water District is the third Wednesday, did you say, or something?
The third Wednesday.
And so Mary's doing that.
Do you wanna be the alternate?
I'm alternate for, uh, OSPAC.
Oh.
So I can be alternate. I just can't be al, I can't go to both at the same night. The likelihood of.
I feel like there needs to be an alternate.
I agree, and, um,
Because I'm afraid.
If you don't mind being an alternate for two things on the same night, like I said, the last time it came up with Mike and I unable to attend, I turned to somebody who would be able to.
To the Mayor Protem?
That's right.
Okay.
The one who goes to all the meetings.
Yeah.
Mary and Sue B. Okay.
If anyone is unhappy substantially with any of these, speak now, or we shall make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before we make a motion, because there's been such a lengthy discussion, I would recommend we open it back up to public comment, see if there's any public comment about the, the discussion, and then take the vote.
Sure, fair enough. Uh, I will reopen public comment. If you wish to speak, please, um, come on up and fill out a card afterwards. And if anyone is dialing in, please raise your hand with star five, and we will acknowledge you. I'll give it a minute for that time delay. Emily, do we have anyone on the line?
There are no raised hands.
And I see nobody racing up to the podium, so I'm going to close public discussion.
Mayor Big Stick, uh, may I suggest, um, that I just read through the list as was, uh, concluded by the deliberations before we entertain a motion?
Sounds good to me.
So for ABAG General Assembly Delegate, I have primary Big Stick, alternate Beckmeyer. Airport Community Roundtable, primary Bowles, alternate Vaterlaus. CCAG Representative, primary Vaterlaus, alternate Beckmeyer. Cloma Creek Flood Citizens Advisory Committee, primary Vaterlaus, alternate Bowles. Emergency Services Council, primary Vaterlaus, alternate Big Stick. Fog Fest Committee Liaison, primary Vaterlaus, alternate Beckmeyer. Heart Member Agency Committee, primary Vaterlaus, alternate Beer. The Hope IAC, primary Beer, alternate Vaterlaus. Joint School District Art and Water District City Articulation Committee, Beer and Beckmeyer as primary. North County Fire Authority, Big Stick and Bowles, both as primary. Pacifica Community Television, Beer as primary, alternate Vaterlaus.
Can we discuss that one? Is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
I, I think I would just would like to offer it to Christine, if you'd like to take that.
I'm sorry, I, I missed.
Oh, Pacific Coast Television?
Oh.
I feel like, well, I, it's the mother in me, I can't help it, but I feel like we didn't offer you enough.
Um. I'm, I'm happy to do it if you, if you don't want to. I, I don't.
I don't think it's a matter of not wanting to. I just wanna make sure that you're getting a, a well-rounded experience.
Uh-huh.
And I, and I'm, yeah, I was just, I just felt like, like we weren't giving enough. I don't know why.
Um, I'm sorry, remind me what, when, when they meet? I'm just looking for it on my list.
Third Thursday. I mean, would, does that interest you, or?
Um, a little bit. I, it's not, yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I know I'm gonna be digging into a lot of our housing stuff and so forth, too, and so, um, yeah, I'm really okay not being on it.
Okay.
Um, but I, I mean, I love what they do and.
Okay, I, I feel better now.
If you have too much, because I.
Feel better now hearing you say that, so I'll, I'll keep it.
Okay.
So for Pacifica Community Television, we're confirming Beer as primary and alternate Vaterlaus. Pacific Beach Coalition, primary Bowles, alternate Beer. Pacifica Resource Center, primary Big Stick, alternate Beer. Pacifica School Volunteers, primary Beer, alternate Beckmeyer. Peninsula Clean Energy, primary Big Stick, alternate Bowles. Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance, or commute.org, primary Bowles, alternate Vaterlaus. San Mateo County, uh, JPA Advanced Life Support Pre-Hospital Emergency, primary Beckmeyer, alternate Bowles. San Mateo County Library JPA, primary Big Stick, alternate Beckmeyer. And then the others are, um, as selected by the other agencies, LAFCO may possibly become Big Stick. CCAG Bike and Ped Advisory Committee, Beer is serving on that. We'll be removing CCAG Congestion Management and Environmental Quality Committee unless, uh, Pacifica Council Member is, uh, appointed to that. CCAG Legislative Committee, Vaterlaus. CCAG Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee, Beckmeyer is serving on that. League of California Cities Coastal Cities Group Leadership Committee, Beckmeyer is serving on that. San Mateo County Recovery Council, Vaterlaus is serving on that. Beautification Advisory Committee, these are under the City of Pacifica Committees and Commissions. Primary Beckmeyer, alternate Beer. Economic Development Committee, primary both Beckmeyer and Beer. Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, primary Bowles, alternate Vaterlaus. Library Advisory Committee, both primaries, Beckmeyer and Big Stick, no alternate. Open Space Parkland Advisory Committee, primary Big Stick, alternate Beckmeyer. And, uh, for the City Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee, the, uh, City Council Rules and Ethics Update Ad Hoc Subcommittee will be, uh, removed as that one is concluded. And we'll have noted, noted, uh, the 2023 Pride Planning Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Beer and Beckmeyer. Council Chambers Renovations Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Beer and Beckmeyer, no changes.
And, uh, in addition, adding the North Coast County Water District.
And for the North House County, North Coast County Water District, this is a non-voting, um, attending their board meetings only on the third Wednesday of the month. The primary will be Beer, alternate Vaterlaus, and that's just for attending the meetings and reporting back to City Council.
Yeah, was Beckmeyer the alternate, I think, on that?
So for North Coast County Water District Liaison, uh, we've got Beer as the primary and alternate Beckmeyer.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need more than that to incorporate NCCWD? Okay, are we? Very good. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I have the motion by Councilmember Beer, and I thought I heard the second by Councilmember Bowles. No.
Beckmeyer.
Beckmeyer, thank you. I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Bowles.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vaterlaus.
Yes.
Mayor Big Stick.
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0.
So before we adjourn, I know that, uh, Councilmember Beer asked that the meeting be adjourned in honor of Ron Hanson. Did you wanna say a word or two about him before we adjourn in his honor?
Um, sure, yeah. Ron Hanson is a lifetime, uh, is a lifetime Pacifican. He probably worked on everybody's car in Pacifica and never asked to be paid. Super generous, loving father. Good friend. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Beer. So we adjourn in honor of Ron Hanson at, uh, 9:45. Thank you very much.
Well done.